Good evening and welcome to our Board of Select meeting on April 6th, 6th through 2020. And we want to thank HCAT. And we'd like to also thank Mr. Nemeth for taping us for residents back home. They don't always get recognized, so we want to make sure that we do. And so, keeping with the agenda, I'd like to invite our Chief up, Chief Cassidy, who's also our Emergency Management Director, come up and give us a report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to update you. I've tried to update the board on a regular basis throughout the week via email, but this gives me the opportunity not only to inform the board, but as well the public. So a lot's happened in both locally as well as the state and national level since my initial briefing to the board on March 11th and the subsequent statement of declaration of emergency on March 16th. On March 23rd, so two weeks ago, I sat here and I announced that we had our first case of positive COVID here in Holliston. By last Monday, that number had risen up to seven positive cases. Today, I am here to announce that as of this afternoon, we have had 15 positive cases. So, what those numbers mean in context? Of those 15, five have already recovered and have been released from quarantine. Unfortunately, included in that list of 15 is one fatality. So unfortunately, this means that we now join many other communities who sadly have to report that unfortunately someone from our community did succumb to the virus. So with the remaining nine active cases, those are spread out over eight locations, so two individuals residing in the same residence. So 15 total positives, one death, nine active cases still. I would like to state that I am completely overwhelmed by the generosity of our community. We have had donations of PPE and a little bit of food as well. But folks who discover that they've got two or three N95 masks still in a box in their basement call up and say, "Can you use these?" And so we're taking anything we can. I'd also like to specifically acknowledge the efforts of the Holliston Public Schools. Their technology was used to print some 3D visors for police and fire use, which is very helpful. They also, the public schools, as you remember, when Dr. Jackson sat here on the 11th of March, he indicated that he had a backpack sprayer unit that could be used to disinfect, and that was put into my custody today, so that we have that. The challenge is getting refills for the supplies, so right now we have to use it very sparingly, but it has been turned over to me for our use for either police cruisers or ambulances. I would also, again, like to acknowledge the efforts that have gone in to provide meals to those who are, have some food insecurity, and that would be a partnership between our schools, businesses, and nonprofit. I also would like to note that I'm encouraged by the resiliency of our employees. Many have had to stay at home, others are working remotely, and I do want to acknowledge that change is hard. We have had great success with the residents complying with the stay-at-home advisory. However, the next one to two weeks really is critical. We were expecting a surge, and as much as cabin fever is setting in, and the days are becoming more beautiful, and the weather is better, we really need people to stay home and to exercise physical distancing. Our businesses, the majority have complied with the nonessential closure that was issued by the governor. There have been a few cases where businesses did not close, and we felt that they should have. Our first foray into having that conversation is one of an educational nature, and we just explained to them that we don't believe that they're on the essential list, and there's a process by which they can try and get that designation. We have had at least one case of someone, a specific business, that even after we told them they needed to close, they opened again the next day. And so we're working through that with their regulatory board. And we also want to acknowledge that it's hard. There are some businesses that could have remained open and have just opted for several reasons, not only the difficulty of trying to maintain social distancing inside their store, but also some of them made the decision recognizing that by continuing to stay open and even offering pickup or delivery service, that it was still encouraging people to leave their homes, and so they made a hard decision to close for one or more weeks to try and encourage people in our community to stay at home. And we appreciate their partnership. The supply chain continues to trickle in the supplies that we've ordered. Our hope, based on what's in shipment right now, is that we will have the majority of what we've ordered just in time for the surge. I can proudly report that currently no public safety employees are in quarantine, and no public safety employees have been tested or are awaiting testing. So we've been very vigilant with regards to the use of PPE when there's ever a chance of an exposure, and so right now, all of our frontline first responders are still in action. So the challenges that we faced are, and this has been a recurring theme, not just for our department, but for everyone, is the acquisition of personal protective equipment. We do have a request that I've made into MEMA, the Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency, for a supply of PPE, which I'm told that my request is under review, which means that it's moving along through the chain. Yes. And then, one of the things that I'll probably want to circle back with the board and discuss how we want to approach this is, one of the challenges that we're facing is reporting to the public. There's been some misinformation that's out there on the internet, on social media. There seems to be a little bit of a conflict between DPH guidance with regards to encouraging local cities and towns not to report individual community data and to have people roll up and focus on the county-level data, and yet, a lot of the communities around us continue to report their community-level data. So when I just provide a one-week update, people in the community are wanting more information. And so we seem to have a little bit of a conflict there, and so the desire to have real-time data, and of course, I'm happy to provide data, but I want to make sure that it's in context. So we can talk a little bit more about that after my prepared remarks. One silver lining that I would make note of is that a lot of good is happening, being based out of Holliston, not just from our municipality. But some people may not know, but the Federal Emergency Management Agency has a mobile emergency response support detachment, which has facilities and assets here in Holliston. It's a well-kept secret, unless you see them out there, you may not know that they're there. But if you saw the field hospitals, which were set up at the DCU or in Rhode Island or in Connecticut, the assets that were set up by the local National Guards came out of that warehouse here in Holliston. So I stopped in and chatted with our federal partners the other day as they were loading up one of the 53-foot tractor trailers headed to go to Worcester that morning. So a lot of good has taken place here. I'm on a lot of phone calls, a lot of video conferences, a lot of webinars from everyone, from conversations with the White House, Federal Emergency Management Agency, Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency, the Mass Department of Public Health, District 14 Fire Chiefs, mayors and managers from out the Commonwealth. So there's a lot of collaboration, there's a lot of information sharing, a lot of lists serves. And so I would also like to acknowledge my staff, who make it possible for me to be able to participate in these meetings and phone calls and webinars, because when I'm tied up with one of those and someone calls and says their smoke alarm is beeping, it falls on one of the officers from the Fire Department to go and investigate that. So I'd like to acknowledge that they make it possible for me to be able to fulfill my duties as the Emergency Manager and Director. And then, just thank you for the opportunity to brief you and let you know what's going on.
Thank you, much, much appreciated. And I forgot to mention to the folks back home, if you'd like to dial in for a conference call, the number is 774-233-7100, and your ID number then would be 582079. And then press the pound key when you're prompted, and you should be all set, and you can listen in, and you can also, if you'd like, when I ask if there's questions, you can ask some questions too. So go ahead and dial in if you'd like. And do we have any questions for the Chief?
So hand sanitizers on vehicles, is, how is that? I know that's one of the supplies that potentially could run low. So in terms of the first responders having access to hand sanitizers and any kind of cleaning wipes in their vehicle, is that something that's running low? Are you in good condition on that?
First responders have gotten some good donations of hand sanitizers. The other departments that are still out there in fleet vehicles do have a supply of spray disinfectant and the ability to decon the vehicle that they are assigned to.
And then, just when we do have the discussion about community, public sharing of information, will you talk at that point about the contact tracing that's going on?
Sure.
I'm not sure how well that's known, the good work that's being done to identify people who may have come in contact with anybody who's testing positive.
Absolutely.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
John? Couple of questions. Chief, PPE, you mentioned that your latest request is being reviewed by MEMA.
Yes.
Do you have a run-out on any type of PPE that you want to bring attention to this board? Running short on anything?
Running short on anything right now, no. We're in really, if everything that's ordered and is shipping arrives as scheduled, then we will have everything we need just in time for the surge.
So based on what you have on hand now, you have enough to get you through how long?
Based on our current run rate and our current experience, I could easily ride out to middle of next, middle to late next week.
So, and MEMA understands your run-out date?
Yes.
Okay, that's part of...
So the requests are prioritized based on your available supply. So I had to disclose what I had on hand.
Yep.
My initial request to them several weeks ago, at that point, I had very, very few, but they had nothing to be able to send me. So that initial request got canceled, but subsequently, I got a delivery of stuff in, and they got a delivery of stuff in. So I was able to project out that I wasn't one of those communities that needed something last week, I needed something next week.
When you say "we," are you including the Police Department?
Yes. All medical supplies for the Police Department are provided through the Fire Department.
And ambulance and so forth.
Yes.
The other question I had was relative to the notification. You mentioned you had 15 cases in Holliston, 10 active.
Yes.
Well, nine active, I guess you could say.
Sure.
The Maven, what I understand, the Maven system gives first responders an alert that somebody has entered the system as potentially presumptive? Is that, is it presumptive or positive?
We no longer use presumptive. Presumptive was very early on. Now that we have the testing capability, all you get is a positive hit.
Okay. What do first responders have in the event they go to a call at 123 Main Street, and the notice to the dispatcher is, "Somebody's having difficulty breathing, they have a high fever"?
So those are two different things.
I understand.
So...
I know they are, that's what I wanted to know.
Sure, so I'll walk you through. So the Maven information is provided to the nursing consultant that is hired by the Board of Health.
Salmon.
Correct. And they then provide the address to the two public safety answering points, police and fire.
So that's the known.
Those are the known locations where there has been a positive COVID test. We don't know any other demographics. We don't know male, female, old, young, the only person in the house, or anything specific. All we know is someone in that house, with the exception of one where there is a house with two positive cases. That's different from the call screening that our telecommunications are doing. And all telecommunications, whether you're calling to say your smoke alarm is beeping, and you'd like someone to come check that out, or your neighbor is doing something that's annoying you and you want to see an officer, everybody is getting the question of, is there anybody in the house that has a cough, difficulty breathing, is there a fever, any fluid-like symptoms? All callers are getting screened for that.
Okay.
So that when the first responders go, they know the proper PPE level to be able to dawn. And guidance just came out this evening, I just pushed it out to our ambulance and to the Police Department, 6 o'clock this evening. The guidance came out that said, based on the number of cases in long-term care facilities, that at this point, any first responder going into a nursing home should presume that there is COVID in that facility and needs to wear all appropriate PPE as if they were encountering a patient that was known with the diagnosis. So that's going to increase our run rate of using these supplies.
I have one more question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
It may be directed at the Chief or perhaps Mr. Moles, but it's more of a public health question, or perhaps a health question. In the event somebody tests positive, I understand the conventional guidance now indicates that individual needs to be in a 14-day quarantine. Is that correct?
And 14-plus, they have to be symptom-free for the last three. So if at day 13, they still have a fever, difficulty breathing, anything like that, even if they get to day 14, they're not released from quarantine yet. They have to be symptom-free for at least three days at the tail end.
You anticipated my question. So what happens at day 13 if they still have a fever? Does the visiting nurse assess them and add more time to their quarantine?
Yes.
Does the clock start again?
It doesn't start again, it extends.
At the discretion of the healthcare provider?
The nursing consultant, yes.
Okay. So if somebody is symptom-free on day 10...
Yes.
And they complete the 14 days, they're quote-unquote cleared to go back, is that correct?
As long as they have been symptom-free for at least three days, yes.
Are they required subsequently, subsequent to that release, to report back on a sequential basis after they're all clear on any recurring symptoms or anything like that?
If they were to have new symptoms, they would need to report that. But if they remain asymptomatic, they do not need to check in.
Got it. Thank you.
That just prompted a question in my mind. In terms of guidance to residents seeking a test, has anything changed from two weeks ago, three weeks ago, on the CDC recommendations for whom should go to be tested?
So those that would be suggested to go get testing would be people who have symptoms.
Okay.
Just because you've had exposure to someone who was diagnosed with a positive test doesn't automatically mean that you need to go test.
So no change in the original guidelines?
Although there's a lot more testing going on...
Right.
They still are being very judicious about to whom they send.
Okay.
And before we ask if there's questions from the folks back home on the conference call, if we can get a little report from our Health Director, who's here, Scott Moles, anything you'd like to say?
No, I'm doing some job again presenting, we talk almost daily. And at this point, again, we have some supplies that came out of our emergency shelter that are now being distributed to this Council on Aging and through the Holliston pantry. And we're going to release the PPE that was for the shelter, knowing that we've got the ability to restock that. So as long as we don't affect, as long as we keep his supply up for emergency responders, some of the grant money that Ant and Covid bought and stockpiled, you know, small cash of PPE is going to be used within the community, and of course, priorities given to people.
Okay. So now we'll take any questions we might have on the conference call to either Chief Cassidy or Health Director Scott Moles.
Hi, I've got a question. This is Jim Pond, I'm at 18 Temi Road. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Can I get the address again?
I've got a data question.
18 Temi Road.
18 Temi, yeah. I have a data question, and then I have, I'd like to get into the discussion that the Chief was alluding to regarding inconsistency of reporting among towns. The data question is, are we tracking how many people have been tested in Holliston?
We don't have access to that.
Okay, okay. So my second question, I'd really like to get into what you alluded to earlier about, there is an inconsistency across the, just our surrounding area, and how the towns are interpreting the direction of the Department of Public Health. And first, let me say that I did reach out to Chief via email, and I appreciate your reply. And I understand your interpretation of their directive. And then I was kind of surprised that there's at least six surrounding towns that, if you go to their website, they do tell you some data, and they're doing it inconsistently, which data sets that they actually present. And some of them update daily and some do not. You know, Ashland, for example, will tell you how many COVID-19 positives are in Ashland and so forth. In other towns, such as Holliston, and apparently Sherborne, and I looked at Medway, they seem to be pursuing just not getting specific to their town and referring people to a kind of a county summary or county statistics. So I would like to discuss that, and I'm wondering if the Chief and the Health Department and the Board are perhaps rethinking in light of the fact that the, there is an inconsistency spread out across the region, some people are reporting and some are not. And apparently, the directive is based upon a concept of confidential health information. I guess the Department of Public Health was thinking that this would get into confidentiality if they started reporting specific, town-specific data, which seems to me to be a misapplication of a confidential health information concept. But, you know, that's open for argument. So I'd really like to, I'd just like to throw that out there and have people discuss that. Are we going to stick with not reporting on our own town website and just reporting via our board meeting? Or are we giving some thought to changing that?
Chief or Scott, which one?
There's been discussion on that. Again, our directive, or the Board of Health directive comes from DPH, which says that we should be notifying it by community-based, county-based.
And I don't work for the Department of, I don't work for the Board of Health, therefore, I'm not always regulated by DPH. I serve at the pleasure of the Board. And if the Board says to me, "You want me to publish community-level data," I will do that. I have the, I'm updating the website on a daily basis with other content related to the coronavirus. So if the Board feels that there is an overarching public interest in providing the data, I am welcome to do that, I take my direction from you, understanding that, you know, the Health, the Board of Health is constrained by their guiding principles from Mass DPH.
Right. I guess I would like to see some sort of a consensus.
I don't want to see this having to be updated every day, I know. You know, just a number of calls regarding, is it updated? Is it, you know, every morning, do it weekly? You know, that maybe makes more sense, but, you know, to be updating it daily, you know...
Well, did I hear at the outset of the meeting that the Select Board is getting updated daily?
Close to daily. I would say that over the course of a week, I'm probably providing them with updates, probably five or six out of seven days.
Right, okay. But I would just argue that the data, the Holliston-specific data is out there. Currently, we're just making it more difficult for residents to find it. I mean, you can get it either by phoning into a Board Select meeting, or you can chase it down eventually on something like Metro West Daily News, if they happen to be covering the Board. So it's kind of just making it more difficult to get the data. And more importantly, I think it's easy to argue that the more information, more data people have, but in my opinion anyway, they're more likely to practice social distancing and all the other precautions that are recommended by our state government and CDC and everybody else. So I think we're, it's actually going to assist the community by giving them more data, more information, so.
John, you had a question?
I just wanted to add that I think Mr. Pond, is this Mr. Pond, Jim Pond, is that it?
Yeah, it is, yeah.
Good evening. I think he's got a good point. Information is shared between the Chief and this Board regularly, sometimes daily. And this evening, he's reporting the same information about the number of cases in Holliston. So to me, it makes no difference if it's done in this forum or on our website. And I happened to be thinking, as he spoke, about the benefit of declaring the number of cases that are actively confirmed in a town, and I think he's right. If people in Holliston were under the impression that the number was low, their instincts might be a little bit less tuned in to the need to practice physical distancing. However, once they hear that there are 15 cases and one perhaps fatality, things might be a little bit more, you know, sit up and listen type of thing. I'm looking at the Ashland State website. The particular information that they post is the same information that we're looking at this evening. It doesn't give the address, it gives no information about the individuals. So as far as I'm concerned, I have no problem directing the Chief to take this information on our website and share it as a simple tally of cases that are ongoing.
Okay. No disagreement with you, Scott, if we...
No. Again, DPH is reporting county, is under your discretion of how the town wants. I understand why the town wants, you know, to know the individual cases, but you don't, being a smaller town, when you hear one, then, you know, all of a sudden, people are looking at, or able to look at the one versus, you know, when a framing hand where you put out the number, it's not, you know, as, you know, as alarming.
Right, 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 right.
I don't know, Scott, we've been talking about one, starting on the first week, and I didn't hear anybody asking who it was.
Once you know you have one positive, you should be taking precautions.
Exactly. That's what it's all about.
But even on a nice day today, you still had a lot of social distancing that didn't happen.
Right, right.
The rail trail was busy all day.
Okay. Mrs. Hine, any comments?
So I echo Mr. Pond's and Mr. Cronin's comments. Chief Cassidy and I talked a little bit about this today. I absolutely think that the first message that needs to go out is that nobody should be concerned that the lack of information means that there's a lack of effort here to protect our community. And so I was hoping that we could talk a little bit, just a little bit, about community contact tracing and reassure residents that the Board of Health, with, I believe also Salmon VNA, are contacting anybody who's been in contact with those who test positive. If you had been in contact with somebody, and correct me or add if you want, Chief Cassidy, if you had been in contact with anybody who had tested positive, you would have been in communication with the Salmon VNA nurse. I think that's a really important message.
If you had been in close contact.
Close contact. I think that's a really important message to get out there. But having said that, I absolutely feel that a lack of transparency has the potential to increase fears, and that transparency of the information has the ability to decrease fears and also reinforce the need for social distancing. I would add one new comment, which would be, we have a lot of volunteer-based efforts in town addressing this crisis, and I think this information is helpful for them as well. Allows them to better gauge their behaviors, their actions, and gauge risk with this information. I think it serves those volunteer-based efforts very well.
The COAs, we've got a group of people already needing masks and everything else on top of them. So everybody is, like any other project in town, is stepping up to help each other.
Wonderful.
I'm in support of it.
And I would just like to clarify that my reluctance to previously publish was not an effort at lack of transparency, but was trying to...
You were respecting the rules.
Respecting the guidance that had been provided by my partner from the Board of Health.
Yeah, everyone knows that, I'm sure. Any other comments, or I'll take a motion, Mr.?
No, I just want a quick question. Mike, the numbers you spoke of earlier, did they include the nursing home or nursing homes in Holliston?
We have no positive hits from nursing home. We do have one group home, but we do not have one at the nursing home.
But you would count a nursing home?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
No other questions, Mr. Chairman?
I'll take a motion, if you'd like to instruct the...
Yes, a motion to instruct the Town's Emergency Manager to add the tally of cases to the Town's website on the COVID-19 information tab.
And how often would you like that?
Daily.
Daily, is that something you can do?
Absolutely.
Do I have a second? All is in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thanks for the call, Mr. Pond.
Thank you, that's democracy in action.
Are there any other questions from the conference call?
I have a public comment.
Okay, could you state your name and address, please?
Yes, Jay, Sheriff 51 Francine Drive.
Okay, Jay.
Before I state my comment, I'd like to thank, as a resident, all the first responders for putting their life on the line. And that's exactly what they're doing. So all I had is off to everybody.
Thank you.
Because I'm sure every resident in the town feels the same way.
Thank you.
My comment, yes, my comment is, has the... My com, yes, my comment is, as the selectmen addressed the property taxes that will be coming up in a couple of weeks. I've talked to some of my elderly neighbors, and they're a little bit concerned, and some of them have part-time jobs that they can't go to, and because of that, they can't bring in the additional income that they need for the property taxes. So, I heard the last town meeting, it has something to do with the state, but whoever it has to do with, maybe we should get ahead of this if we can maybe even split the property taxes to give everybody who can't afford them time to pay it without penalties or interest or reports to whoever the property taxes would have a detrimental effect on... That's my comment.
Mrs. Hine.
Well, Jeff, I'm not sure if this is the right time to bring this up, but I'll just state that on Friday, the governor signed legislation that does allow for municipalities to, I'm just going to make sure I read it correctly, opt to delay property tax due dates as well as opt to waive interest and penalties on late payments. And I believe Mr. Ritter shaking his head here, affirmative, I believe we're going to have a discussion next Monday evening on this topic. If I could refer you to perhaps calling back or suggest that you call back in next Monday when it's actually on the agenda for discussion. This bill was just passed on Friday, and so I think there's some time for our accountant and our treasurer and others to digest the information and the impact. We're just getting town council input as well. And again, it will be on our agenda next Monday evening.
That sounds fine.
Mr. Cronin?
Makes sense to me.
Any comments, questions?
No, it's ironic, I saw that explanation from council this morning, and I thought it was a, it's a smart piece of legislation. I think the caller brings into focus some of the challenges that residents are experiencing in our community, and anything we can do to help, I'll sign that, so.
Okay.
Yep, not a problem.
I may make one other comment before I hang up.
Sure.
I'd like the fire chief to keep a, more of a distance from Mark when he's trying to, in the beginning of the meeting, he was, I think, too closer than the six feet, because I don't want anything happening to either of you guys. I don't want you to be in the numbers.
No, we don't either. But thank you, Jay, for calling in, and we'll look forward to talking to you again next week.
Thank you very much.
All right. Anyone else on the conference call? All right, keeping with the agenda.
Thank you, Chief.
We have a warrant.
Thanks, Scott. Tonight's warrant is for $964,879.73.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Public comment, Mrs. Hine.
First is just to again state that the Community Action Fund continues to accept donations, and you can find them at HollistonCommunityAction.org, and they are available to help out residents who need financial assistance of small or large kinds, so please reach out to them. The contact is through the Youth and Family Services Office. Everything is on the website, which is again HollistonCommunityAction.org. And then, excuse me, the last thing I'd like to say is that I got an update from the Holliston Food Pantry this past weekend. They are currently serving 126 families. They are also able at this time during this crisis to help any family or any individual in need. There's no special criteria that need to be made, as I understand it. Call the food pantry, the number is 429-5392, or find them at the HollistonPantryShelf.org. Again, that's HollistonPantryShelf.org if you are in need of any assistance, and also donations can be made through that same website. And the Holliston Food Pantry would like to call out special thanks to Karen Jewett, Bob Nemmett, Steve Bradford, Gina Ryder, Christine and Berto Acosta, and Dave O'Neil for all of their hard work during this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cronin?
I'm good, thank you.
You're all set? I just, under public comment, just want to thank the residents who have been really rallying and helping to support the small businesses in our town, and I know that it's made a big difference. A lot of these small businesses are mom-and-pops type of locations, and they are neighbors and part of the community, so I wanted to publicly thank residents for doing that. Next, we have the report of the town administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've got a very brief report here tonight. Just a reminder that the Finance Committee is meeting tomorrow night, and the other thing is, I received a call from E.L. Harvey about they're temporarily suspending, due to the virus, bulk pickup items through the month of April.
Okay.
So...
So, something like a refrigerator?
Refrigerator, a couch, something like that. Won't be picked up until probably early May at the best. Finally, the time period for submitting letters of interest for the Town Administrator Search Committee is this Friday, so we've already had a robust list of interested individuals. So, if you're interested in serving on the Town Administrator Search Committee, please submit a letter or resume, and/or resume to my attention, and we'll get you on the list.
Right. Any questions to you? No, thank you, no. John, any questions for the town administrator?
No, I, I'll wait till the screening committee comes in.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any questions from the conference call for our town administrator?
I will say that, excuse me, I will say that next week, our Sustainability Coordinator is scheduled to call in and give you an update, and I also have our Facilities Manager scheduled to do the same.
Great. And boy, I've noticed that the new Facilities Manager has been quite busy, and doing a lot of important things for our town, considering the Woodlands Street situation with regulations, DEP and all the rest, so very timely, and he appears to be taking some pressure off of your plate, which was the whole idea, so. And I hope that the two of you are working well together.
We are. We meet every Friday morning at 8:00 for a conference call.
Wonderful.
He reviews what he's been up to, and I continue to unload files onto his desk.
Great. I noticed that there was an email from the Pinecrest Golf Course that he was directing them that they can call him directly now when they have issues with pumps and whatnot, and that should help facilitate things much quicker, more efficiently, and hopefully, I would think, save the town a lot of money, too.
I think so, definitely.
One thing I want to make sure, either he or, is Sean going to be with him during the meeting next week, or is it just the Facility Manager?
Next Friday morning?
No, 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 when they appear before us.
I have not invited Sean necessarily.
The only, the only issue is when Sean did his budget presentation
Yep.
To the FinCom two weeks ago, there was sufficient confusion about the Facility Manager's budget for FY '21. It was, it's a product of a couple of things, but it looked like the printout that they were all commonly using
Yep.
Had an odd number, just under $25,000 in other costs, and people weren't quite sure what that was. So, I'd asked Sean, following the call, to clean that up with James and Sharon. So, I'm hoping that when we hear from James next week and/or Sean, we have a very clear idea of what that budget looks like for FY '21. Okay? I could pass that along as part of the agenda item.
Not a problem.
That would be great. Any other questions for our town administrator? Okay, moving on to some board business here. We have meeting minutes of March 30th, 2020.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, those are not ready for approval tonight.
They're not? Okay. We will hold off. We have an on-call EMT appointment. Mr. Cassidy has sent the request, and Mr. Ritter, was it approved by you?
Yes.
Any, anything you want to share with that, or is we all set?
Oh, I think you're all set.
Okay, I'll have a motion to accept the appointment.
Move to accept Nicholas Darcy Couteau as our newest on-call EMT.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
That's an awesome middle name, Nicholas.
We have McMahon, Town Center update, Robert Smith prepared an update. Jeff, do you want to go over that?
I don't have really much to say about it at all. I mean, other than we need to proceed with the project.
Right, and do you know, it was my understanding he tweaked a couple of things already, but they were waiting for some parts for other things. Do you have any idea when they'll be back?
I don't.
You don't?
Sorry.
Could you check and find out?
Yep.
When, what their schedule's like and when they'll be back?
Sure.
I know they were here and they did some, some small things that you could do.
So, they're looking for permission, Mr. Chairman, for notice to proceed on the $24,300 item that we discussed back in November? And this is coming from existing funds?
That's coming from existing funds. The monies are there.
Traffic signal reconstruction.
And that's all been voted on?
The board voted on that.
So, you're going to tell them?
Yeah.
He's all said he can come on the 24th?
Yep.
Okay.
I had to ask Jeff briefly, if, quickly I should say, if it was an issue with the police being put on detail, because we'd had a conversation with McMahon, in order to do some of the work, there'd need to be a police detail there. I'm assuming that the police department is fine to provide that detail during this time, but there was also a question of when this would be scheduled, because this is dependent upon the DPW getting their people in line to come out to do the painting, particularly of that intersection at Hollis and Washington Street.
So, they're looking to come out on the 24th of this month, right, McMahon? Is that correct?
I'm not sure about the date exactly, but I do know I had a conversation with the police chief.
Okay, great.
And he said this is a good time, actually, to do the work.
Okay, great.
Because the volume of traffic is way down, and this would be a good time to do that.
Who would be taking the lead on this small project? Who would be the point person to make sure all the Xs are crossed and Ts are, Ts are crossed, I mean?
I guess you're looking at them.
You are, okay, because it seems to me there's a few players that have to...
We have to do some coordination.
Yeah, we've got to do some coordination.
Yeah, we'll have to have a project meeting, a brief project meeting with Sean.
Could you do that soon?
Yep.
Because we don't want to have things having to be done twice. So, Sean should be at that meeting from the DPW, the police chief, maybe even the fire chief, you might want to talk to him as well on that meeting.
Yep.
And yourself, and then, and McMahon, obviously, and then we can nail down exactly who's going to do what, when, and get it done quickly as possible.
Got it.
One last comment, given the tone of the conversation earlier with Chief Cassidy, CMS, I would just ask that someone checks in with them that they have policies in place to maintain social distancing when they're on the job. They are essential workers, it looks like by definition by the governor, but that, you know, I think it's important that we uphold not only our residents, but people working in the town as well, to social distancing. So, if someone could just check with CMS through McMahon, perhaps, that they will follow whatever internal policies they have to maintain social distancing. That's it, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on?
No.
Okay. Any questions from the conference call on the upcoming McMahon Company doing some tweaking of the downtown signalization lights and so forth? Okay. All right. Gift acceptance. We've got a community farm, fire department, and Burkeholz family, a donation from Willabrook family to the Holliston Community Farm, the amount of $200.
Move to accept the $200 donation from the Willabrook Farm to the Holliston Community Farm.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. We have a fire department donation.
Move to accept a donation of $975 from the Holliston newcomers and neighbors for cold water rescue suit to the fire department.
Isn't that nice of them to do, eh? Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. And the next one?
A motion to accept a donation of $150 from the Burkeholz family for a child's birthday party and fire station tour to the fire department.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Annual town meeting warrant. Jeff?
So, from the meeting last week, I've updated the warrant and deleted, I think it was, the traffic article. I crossed it out, hasn't been actually deleted yet, it's just been crossed out. I updated the dates for town meeting and for the election.
Okay.
And from now on, next week, I'm forecasting that we're going to start having, well, I know we're going to, we have tentatively scheduled the petitioners to come in and make a presentation on their petitioner article.
Okay.
When I say come in, they'll probably do it by telephone.
Right, right.
So, we're trying to limit as much as we can
Right.
Our interaction with people.
Right. Luckily, we have a small board.
Yep.
I know the Finance Committee can't possibly meet with seven members, but...
Jeff, who are the two petitioners?
The one petitioner.
One?
The pet.
Okay.
The pet.
Puppy Mills?
Puppy Mills, yeah.
Anything else?
No, if I recall correctly, there were some capital items in there from other town boards, committees, and I believe it's this board's policy that they come before us.
Yeah, I sent out the policy last week.
I saw that.
You saw that? Okay, so just reminding people
Okay.
That it's out there. But right now, under that capital article, there are only two cost centers, if you will. That's the school department and the board selectman. There's nothing from the library or anybody else.
There was, there was the $65,000 item that the Finance Committee discussed last week, which I think was a carpeting issue, Jeff. Remember that article?
Okay, yes, I'm sorry, yep.
Dan Alfred talked about it.
Yep.
Okay, so the school committee will be coming, or they'll be on a conference call with us regarding the capital request?
At some point, at some point in the next 30 days, definitely.
Yeah, plenty of time still.
Well, I just wanted to bring that up. Given that there's a delay now, that town meeting has been pushed out, obviously, the school committee is having to kind of go back and look at their budget. Excuse me.
Certainly.
I wonder if at some point we should take a look at that policy and just make sure that the timeline that was set up for normal times is applicable during these times. The school committee has over $1 million worth of capital requests on Article 17, for example, and they're being proactive right now in going back and looking at what those requests are and taking a second look at them as well as their own budget. So, I think the more time we can give them to do that, the better, and so I'm just, there is a little bit of rigid language in the policy, which again, makes sense perhaps during normal times, but we're all kind of waiting to understand more of the economic impact of this crisis, and I would not want to hold a committee, the school committee, that's actively working to look at their budgets and their requests and so on in response to this. I would not want to hold them to a rigid timeline. I put that out there for discussion to get your thoughts, because I think we need to probably be as flexible as possible in every area as we all look to get as much information possible. So, we kind of heard from the Finance Committee last Tuesday that the end of the month was looking like a time when there'd be more economic indicators and more information down from the state level on what fiscal year '21 might look like, as well as the remainder of fiscal year '20, and so I'm wondering about sort of end of April, early May being a timeframe where we start to really get into this information.
I think postponing the town meeting the way we did into mid-June is going to allow everyone to collect more data and decipher it, and so I think it's going to work out pretty good. Any questions?
Sure, I agree with you.
Okay.
And if I'm not mistaken, the legislation that was approved on Friday would actually allow for a town to postpone it again.
If they need be.
If need be.
Okay.
We don't, we just don't know where we're going.
I have a feeling John's behind that.
It's July.
I know he is.
The more time the better.
Okay. Town Administrator Screening Committee. It looks like we have 10 residents from last week, really quite a list of people. And I think it's closing on April 10th, right? So, we still have a little more time should somebody want to send in an interest to be on the new Town Administrator Screening Committee. If you are, you could email Mr. Ritter at Town Hall, or you could leave a message at Town Hall, or you could go onto the website and leave a message there as well. So, we won't be deciding on who's going to be on this committee until after the 10th, but it looks like there's quite a bit of... But it looks like there's quite a bit of interest.
I spoke to, by email this afternoon, was Sharon Flaherty from Paradigm. Wanted to make sure I understood what their expectations were. I thought I remembered, but I didn't. When they came in to present to us, she reminded me, late April, early May, to have this group seated works best for them. So fits nicely into our schedule. Much better, I mean, this is, the names on this list are quite diverse. There are some folks that are new to screening committees and things like that, other people that have been around that before. Great diversity, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've got some good pick ones here.
Absolutely.
Can I just get a little advice or input on what it's going to look like? So I assume Monday night we'll talk about this?